Call this meeting in order.
So you have a few can lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unuttered, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let the record show that Mr. Dobna and Mr. Almehan are absent. The rest are here. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
Yes, it has.
Three A, public comments. If there's anyone wishing to address the board tonight, please take a moment to fill out the registration form prior to public comment being closed. For policy 0167.3, anyone wishing to participate in a period of public comment must be a resident of the Richland School District, a parent or legal guardian of an enrolled school district student or enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must be physically present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotment of 30 minutes will be given for public comments. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. A translator may be used to translate verbal communication to the board. If such translation services are used, six minutes shall be given to that participant with only the first three minutes being designated to the total time allotment. Speakers are not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons or make a specific person subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Ms. Steele, do we have any public comments?
None.
Thank you. Four A, administrators' report.
Okay, so several updates to give the board and our public. First of all, some dates. There will be a special Buildings, Property and Transportation Committee meeting on Tuesday, August 20th. That meeting will start at 5:00, and that is the building walkthroughs. And so the committee will start at the primary school at 5:00, and then we'll be traveling to the intermediate school, then to the partner school, and then finishing at the high school, and then adjourning from the meeting from this location. So that'll be on August 20th, again, starting at 5:00, starting at the primary school. And then on August 21st, this is our regularly scheduled committee nights. We'll have our Buildings and Property and Personnel meetings starting at 6:00 PM and our curriculum and policy meetings starting at 7:30. Again, that will be in the board conference room as well as here in the IMC. Those four committee meetings. And then a couple of other dates that the board should be aware of. On Friday, August 23rd, this is our new employee orientation meeting. We have all of our teachers and substitute teachers come for some mandatory training on Friday, 23rd. And then around 11:30, we have a luncheon in the West Commons. The Commons is down by the auditorium, and I would invite any board members to come and join us for that. We usually have a meal prepared for our food by our school district food service staff, and then also just some quick introductions where everybody can just stand up, say who they are, familiarize some names to faces for our new employees. And then on Monday, August 26th, this is our official welcome back for all staff. We will start that at 8:00 AM in the auditorium. And then the rest of that week, our teachers and our support staff in all of our departments, they'll all be here, and they'll do professional development. They have in-service days. They will do some training. They have meetings. They have get ready for school, time allocated for all of those kinds of things. Before I get into some project updates and some summer updates, any questions from the board on any of those dates or times that I mentioned? Okay. Okay, and then just three project updates. One, it's been a busy summer. Our summer cleaning is well underway and, for the most part, complete. There are just a few main hallways, most likely what you saw visibly when you walked in here at the high school as well as the other buildings. Some final touch-ups. Mr. Jones expects all of those hallways and all of the summer cleaning to be completed by the end of next week, Thursday, before our new staff come back. We do have some rooms that we need to move at the different buildings as we look to accommodate space for the newly approved alternative education programs that we have in each building. So there are some classroom moving that need to happen, but as far as summer cleaning, that's almost complete. You'll notice the roofing equipment out here in our parking lot. The roofing project is on schedule here at the high school. The bulk of that project will be done by August 20th. And then what they'll have left is the area over the four technical education spaces. So there's technically now, not to have a pun there, but there are three technical education spaces and a 730th grade band, okay, in the four classrooms in the back of the building. The last phase of the roofing will be that area there. They did save that for last so that if they did need to run into the first couple of days of school, they were doing the project in the areas that normally have a lot of sound, okay? So they anticipate taking the rock off of that area on August 20th, and they are expecting that to be done by the start of school, possibly two or three days into the first couple of days of school. But by that first week, the roofing should be done, and all of our buildings should have good roofs on them that will last for several years. And then finally, perhaps the most important as it relates to the referendum and some of the things that we were looking to do with the referendum, you may be aware that we have some sinking classrooms in our kindergarten rooms at the primary school. We did some soil samples and did some digging earlier this summer. We had some structural engineers come out to really assess the full, what we were really facing there. Long story short, the walls have slid off the foundation footings. And when the walls then sunk, and we have areas of our classrooms that have sunk four or five inches, the walls sunk, but the roof did not sink at the same pace, okay? They were being held up by the rafters. And as a result, there has created a separation between our walls and our roof, okay? And so this week, Nexus will have contractors coming in to secure those classrooms to make sure that they're safe and secure and that they're engineerly, structurally sound by the engineers. And everything will be safe and will be good to go for the start of school, but you will see some of that project happening. The permanent long-term solution that will happen next summer is they tear down the walls and rebuild it back up. But this is what they will be doing to address that situation for the school year. And then we'll be able to use those buildings, and everything should be good. So, again, any questions from the board on any of those updates? I know there's a lot, but a lot I wanted to let you know about. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Board. Four B, board member reports. Do we have any tonight? All right. Four C, exit interview report from Amber Bingham.
Okay, so you saw the video that was uploaded to board docs. Hopefully you got a chance to watch that. Amber Bingham is our HR director, and over the last couple of years, she's conducted approximately 40 exit interviews. And this video is a summary of the findings and the trends that she's seen along with some of the recommendations that she's making for administration moving forward. I do want the board to keep in mind that the data does cover two years, okay? And so some of the older data is included in the GROCO 40, but you do have to decipher between what our current trends are and what was maybe something in the past. For instance, pay was listed as something that was something that employees least liked about our district, but all of those that concern about pay happened in the 2223 school year and not necessarily the 2324 when that has been addressed. Well, included as part of the data, I do want to just make sure that as you re-watch that or get questions about it and address it, that you're very careful about the data that this Bingham pointed out was this year versus last year, or at least the trends regarding that. Amber is present tonight, so if you do have any questions, we can have her address them and turn it over to the board.
So any questions for Ms. Bingham? Thank you, Ms. Bingham. Appreciate the report. Okay, moving on to five A, upper lower prior meeting minutes. If I can get a motion to approve those minutes.
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Dickman. Thank you, second. Second by Ms. Troxell. Any questions or concerns? Mr. Van Landy?
Aye.
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 Six, financial items, approval of statement of cash.
I move we approve the statement of cash dated August 7th, 2024.
Thank you, second.
I'll second that.
Second by Mr. Van Landy. Any questions on that? Mr. Hummer?
Aye.
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 Six B, approval of invoices.
I move we approve Community First Bank General Checking Account checks number 86533 to 86556 and ACH number 242501802 to 242501824 and EFT 202400002 to 202400012 for a net total of $514,616.36. This is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Any questions regarding the approval of invoices? Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
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 Aye. Seven A, approval of consent agenda items. Ms. Steele?
Motion to approve the donation of the playground balls to the Richland Center Primary School valued at approximately $145 from Culvers per policy 7230. Motion to accept the donation of monies towards the Art of Education Curriculum Suite for the District Art Department, valued at approximately $4,383 from the Richland School District Foundation per policy 7230. Motion to waive policy 5851 school events on Wednesdays, Sundays, and holidays to allow the Richland Center High School band to perform on Wednesday, December 4th, in lieu of Monday, December 9th, to avoid the December 9th Board of Education meeting. Motion to approve the donate, the organizations listed to be sanctioned for the 2425 school year as presented. Motion to approve the revisions to the job descriptions as presented effective immediately. Motion to approve the 2425 employee handbook revisions as presented, effective immediately. And motion to approve up to four additional exchange students to the 2425 school year if additional requests are made after August 15th and they approved of the placements. And that is it.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion to approve the, I've heard the consent items, some moved, presented by Mr. Van Landy. Thank you, second.
Second.
Second by Ms. Dickman. Ms. Dickman?
Aye.
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 I'd like to thank generous donation from Culvers and the Richland School District Foundation. Number eight A, approval of modified agenda. I move to approve the modified agenda. Thank you, second.
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Troxell. Any questions on it? Aye.
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 Number nine, district vacancies and appointments. Mr. Board?
Okay, so you'll see our vacancies and appointments that we've got there at the top of the memo, our custodian one. Ironically, you've seen this posted now for several months. We actually took it down from Indeed and reposted it. And when we reposted it, we ended up with 29 applicants in about four days. So I guess we've learned a lesson there that maybe we've got to keep reposting those things. So those interviews are happening, I believe, Friday and Monday in the coming week, and hopefully have that long-time opening filled. Math is listed as an opening that is pending board approval for a name later on tonight. We do still have a part-time all-day and speech and language pathologist open, and as well as a cross-category teacher at the intermediate school. Those interviews are in the works. And the newly approved RC school, the small school educational environment, there are three positions there. At least one of those is pending action later tonight. And then we have a grade four opening officially open after the board accepts a resignation later this evening. Those are the openings that we currently have that we'll make your way up. And again, as always, the information below is the information the board saw at the last board meeting and is now available for public to see. Any questions from the board? Thank you.
Thank you. Nine B, 2324 pledge update.
Okay, so with this due to an illness, Mr. Bosworth is not here tonight, and so I would ask that be postponed to the August 26th board meeting.
Thank you. Number 10, action items. Layer A, the MOU for counseling services with Richland County Health and Human Services.
Okay, so a little bit of background information. So if you remember, during the 2223, excuse me, 2324 school year, this past school year, we entered into an MOU with the Pawquette Center as kind of a pilot to try to get students that needed counseling supports an opportunity to have those support serviced in our building, okay? We provided a space for those students, and that allowed those families and students in particular to have a connection and a place to get therapy sessions if they so chose. That worked out really, really well. In fact, earlier this summer, the board approved extending that MOU with Pawquette for another year, the 2425 school year. We've also been in connection with Richland County Health and Human Services to have a similar MOU in place for the county. I believe that the more options that we can provide families and our students, the better off we are. And working with our local county as well as having Pawquette Center is a good start to that. So the MOU that's in place here is nearly identical with some name and address changes that we've already got in place with Pawquette, but this will give our families and students in particular an additional option for counseling services. Mr. Josam, anything that you would like to add that I might have missed?
Well, that was a great summary. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I get a motion to accept the MOU for counseling services with Richland County Health and Human Services as presented?
I'll make that.
Motion by Mr. Hummer. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Troxell. Any further discussion? Mr. Van Landy?
Aye.
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 Aye. Ten B, selection of bond proceeds management firm.
Okay, so I'm going to do my best to put my business official hat back on since Mr. Bosworth is absent from tonight's meeting. So a little background information, again, just more as a reminder than anything. You heard Kevin Mullen from Baird speak several meetings ago now where he talked about the issuance of bonds are two different levels, okay? One would be a $15 million issuance of bonds right away with the second 12.16 next March. And there was a couple of advantages in doing that. One, that you actually get to amateurize the financing over 21 years, okay? 20 for the first set and 20 for the second set. But more importantly, because by staying at $15 million or less, the IRS loosens the rules as it relates to arbitrage, okay? And arbitrage is when an organization simultaneously is paying interest on a loan and investing that same money and gaining interest on it, okay? And you would do that when the interest that you're getting on a return is higher than the interest that you're paying. If any organization borrows public funds in excess of $15 million, the arbitrage that they gain, okay, by investing the funds is limited to the amount that they're paying out, okay? If you're at $15 million or less, you avoid those arbitrage rules and other restrictions, I should say, and you can therefore earn as much interest as the market allows, okay? All right, so fast forward to this agenda item, which is the bond management firm, all right? We issued our first bonds, $15 million, in July, and so we now have $15 million of referendum money sitting in our local government investment pool. And it's earning some interest in that pool, all right? And, excuse me, I just lost my train of thought here. What a bond management company will do is they will take that money, because it's not all going to be spent in one lump sum, right? And we don't, our contractors that are doing the various projects aren't going to just sit on everything until two years from now, and then we issue $27 million of checks out. We're going to be paying people as it happens, okay? And so there's a period of time when there's a good chunk of money, all right, a good chunk of money in terms of what we're all used to, right? $15 million and another 12 in March, they can be earning interest. And so by using a bond management firm, they can go beyond the scope of what a local government investment pool can do. They can invest it in competitive CDs. They can invest it in competitive investment pools, similar to an LGIP, but different in nature, money markets, things like that. School district or a public entity cannot invest money that they have secured from the public and invested into a risky situation. They cannot invest it into the stock market, for example. That would be illegal. They can invest it into these CDs. And so what a bond management company will do is they will get bids from banks across the nation. They will do the same thing for investment pools and money markets, but I'll just use CDs as an example, to ask them, based on our draw schedule, okay, maybe we have, maybe we're expecting $2 million to be taken out of that fund to pay contractors in November of this year because there's some work starting to be done, architectures have to be, architects have to be paid, et cetera. They would say to all of these banks across America, whoever they've got in their pool, what will we get on a return if we invest that $2 million from now until the draw date in November, okay? And then they do that for every component of the funds that we have, and we can earn interest on that, okay? And so if you look at the bottom of the memo, we worked with Baird, and we sent out an RFP, a request for proposal, requesting these firms to submit a proposal for us, okay? And on the third line down, the second after the heading, you'll see the proposed earnings that Amper Stan, ADM, and PMA all submitted back to us. Now, I want you to be cautious of, because we are issuing our bonds over two years, okay, and over two sessions, there were a lot of assumptions made as to what rates would be in next March, okay? It would be very easy for them to say, this is what we could do for the $15 million right now based on this interest rate. But all of them are making projections on what they think the market will do for next March. And so we can't really compare, well, this one says we can get 1.4, and this one says we can get 1.3, therefore, let's jump on the 1.4. Because based on their company's philosophy, do we, you know, be very conservative and under premise and over deliver, right? Or do we get a little bit more aggressive and show a really nice return in the hopes that folks will use us as a deliverer? So we work with Baird to kind of sift through the proposal and focus on the things that they can control. What are their fees? What kind of transparency and reporting will they be able to provide, both the district, the board, and our public? And do we have any past relationships with any of these companies? And so in the end, we focused on those things, and we are recommending, and this also came in the recommendation of personnel negotiation, the budget development committee, that we use PMA Securities. The advantages are listed in the memo. They are a company that we have worked with before when we've had to do short-term borrowing. We've had a very good experience with them. They also seem to have, in our opinion, better reporting from a transparency standpoint, as well as some lower fees. And if you just kind of look at the fees section, the PMA Securities for CDs is 20 basis points compared to 26.97 basis points for American Deposit Management Company. That was just one of those things. Amber Stan was a company that we looked at, but they just haven't had a lot of experience with schools. PMA only deals with public entities, not just schools, but cities as well. ADM is a little bit more on the cross path. So, anyway, for those reasons, that's the recommendation that Mr. Bosworth and I are making, as well as the personnel negotiations and budget development is making. And so we're recommending that we use PMA Securities to manage our bond proceeds and approve that resolution that's attached to the PMA.
Mr. Board, could I get a motion to approve PMA Securities to manage bond proceeds from the sale of bonds from our 2024 capital referendum and approve the resolution to use WISC as an investment fund?
I would so move.
Motion by Mr. Van Landy. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Dickman. Any further questions or discussion?
I will add just one last thing here. You will see that all three of them, you know, we do anticipate earning somewhere in the 1.3 to 1.5 million on interest. That money can be used for anything that is encompassed in the referendum question, question number two specifically. So anything that is part of those questions, the interest earned on those proceeds can also be used for those, which allows us to do a little bit more project than what we anticipated, okay? You can't just keep it and spend it on, you know, whatever, right? It has to be used in conjunction with the referendum question. So just keep that.
I did have a question. You mentioned that they were using projections from March, but then in the motion it is, I only heard specifically 2024. So is this a one-year?
It's the 2024 referendum, not the proceeds and such. So that's what that is.
So they would be doing this, so, sorry, of that 1.3 million, for example, is that what's anticipated based on the total 27.?
Yes, 27.16, yes. Total proceeds after everything's taken care of.
In looking at the information that's provided here, I think PMA is by far the best. It's not the most aggressive. It's not the least. It's kind of middle of the road, which is the way it would tend to go personally. But from what you have here, I think this is probably our best investment. So, thank you.
Any other discussion? Mr. Hummer?
Aye.
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 Ten C, goals and priorities 2024, 25 school year.
Okay, so this comes the recommendation of the Curriculum Assessment and Public Relations Committee. A year ago, I had made a push to the board, and they followed the suggestion. I'm appreciative of that, of really making sure that we had some very clear goals and priorities for our school year. Last year, we ended up with six goals, and I thought we did a very good job of making progress on all six of those goals, but I did find that six was a lot, right, to focus on and to really make an impact. And so one of the suggestions that I made at the curriculum committee with the support of Dr. Sherry Johnson was that, can we lower that down to maybe four goals, where we can really, really dive deep into it? Because the last thing I would want to do with goals is just check the box and, you know, dot the i's and cross the t's. I want to make, I want to have a substantial impact on these things. And so I thought we did some great work as a board and as an administrative team with our goals last year, but moving forward to 2425, I'm recommending, we're recommending, and again, this has gone through the curriculum committee, that we have essentially one goal and then four supporting priorities. And that number one goal be that we address open enrollment, okay? From our 2022, 23 data, the resident students that are 18 years and younger, school-aged children that reside in our district, we were only retaining 75% of them, okay? We were losing 25% of our resident students to other educational choices. That cost us about $1.5 million, okay, in net open enrollment in versus out. And so if we can use that as a measurable goal, and when we look at September 3rd, Friday count, a year from now, 2025, the hope would be that the efforts that we do this year and the efforts that we've already done, that that decrease this year and the efforts that we've already done, that that decreases that by 5%, okay? And then we can retain 80% of our resident students, okay? And really start to flip that open enrollment and address that open enrollment issue, something that's been out there for a long time, and I don't know that we've really ever taken big steps to address that particular topic. And so the ask is that that's what we make this goal, that we focus on our open enrollment out and try to retain more students. And with that, the four priorities are that we, number one, continue to focus on student wellbeing, continue to gather student data, continue to gather feedback from students as it relates to who they feel comfortable talking to, those student mapping activities that we did, but also to get more information from the students on their overall classroom and educational experience, okay? How do you, are you learning in this class? What's working, what's not, et cetera. Number two, that we have more consistent classroom environments, that we focus on consistent discipline. Our administration's already starting to work on some of that, but that we make this as a true goal, that we make sure that we have clear learning objectives in all of our classrooms, and that we clean up the intervention process. Number three, that we build on the distinguished staff definition that we established last year. Now, we have an agreed-upon definition, now what are we going to do with that? What do we want our distinguished staff to do, and what can we do for them once they reach that level of distinguished staff? And then finally, number four, build on the professional learning community or the PLC framework. We've already established that to some degree when we have approved the calendar for early release Wednesdays. This allows our teachers to systematically work on curriculum work and the PLC framework. We just underwent some training, our building administrators and several of our staff went along with Sherri Johnson, really turning our attention into what we want our students to know, that number one question from the curriculum team that has been brought forward. So by really focusing on those four priorities and really trying to make the educational experience better in the Richland School District and continuing to build on some of the positives that we have, we think we can get that open enrollment and retain more of our students by the fall of 2025. So that's the ask, and I'll turn it over to the Curriculum Committee if I missed anything from the folks that are on that committee that you'd like to add.
Bingham, that committee, I think you did a good job. Thank you.
Thank you.
So can I get a motion to accept the recommendation from the Curriculum Assessment and Public Relations Committee to approve the goals and priorities for the 2024-25 school year as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Ms. Dickman. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Seconded by Ms. Troxell. Any further discussion?
I just have a quick question, just wondering, and if you don't know this answer, Mr. Board, that's fine too, but that 5% decrease, what does that equate to in bodies? Do you know that?
We have approximately, I'm just going to use round numbers, approximately 1,250 resident students.
Okay.
So 10% would be 125, 5% would be 62-ish.
Okay.
62 around.
Okay. Great, thank you. Appreciate that math off the cuff.
Round numbers.
Any further discussion? Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
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 I move to go into closed session pursuant to our statutes 19.851(c) and/or (f) as appropriate to consider employment, promotion, and compensation of employees for the purpose of discussing individual employee hiring and compensation. Wisconsin statutes 19.851(f) and Wisconsin statutes 118.125 to discuss student open enrollment applications and individual pupil information related to those applications. The board may take action on these issues in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Mr. Van Landy?
Aye.
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 Aye. Thank you very much.